April twenty first, twenty twenty. The time is now four forty-two. I apologize for the tardiness. We're trying to get used to this new method. I will start with agenda item number one. Open meeting invocation and pledge of allegiance. Inlocation led by Councilman Mr. Pete Crisp and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Mr. Robert Molina.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Everybody can bow their heads where they're at. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather today in this, this new technology in order to continue to do the business of the City of Alice and for the citizens that we watch over and that help us be a great community. We pray that you assist us in making the decisions that best serve our community and those around us. Dear Heavenly Father, we just, we just pray that you watch over those out there taking care of those in need, the essential workers that are still doing their job and the first responders that have to, uh, to be in the front lines every day, including our nurses. Dear Heavenly Father, please watch over our community, our people, the people overseas, our government as a whole. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance, Mr. Molina, please? Robert?
Did we lose him?
Okay. Robert, if you can hear us, we can't hear you. Okay, Mr. Ron, could you please do the pledge of allegiance for us?
Sure, Mayor. Hand it over, please. Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, and I don't know, should we check to make sure Robert's still on?
Hello?
Robert, there you are. Sorry.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. No, no, I, I, I switched over to the webinar, but it, it wouldn't give me the audio.
Oh, okay. Well, we went ahead to agenda item number two, if that's okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. I do not have citizen comments in front of me.
Or roll call of everybody, of all the council members that are on, so that we can, um, validate.
Okay, public, uh, announcements, and we'll do roll call, um, simultaneously. Councilman Pete Crisp? Announcements?
Okay, sorry. Uh, no, no public announcements at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Robert Molina?
Uh, no, no one, nothing to say.
Thank you. Councilman Ron Burke?
None.
Councilman Ron Burke?
Can you hear me? None, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Sandra Bowen?
Uh, yes, all I have to say is, um, I'd like to thank the community for doing their part in staying safe and, and healthy and, uh, just to let them know that I truly appreciate everybody's efforts and for God to complete, continue to bless our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. And I, I, at this time, I just want to thank the citizens and, and everybody that's taking part in all of this. We can't thank you all enough. It's a very trying time for everybo, everyone. We're all in this together, and it is a very hard and trying time. So I appreciate everybody's vigilance in this matter, patience, courtesy, kindness. These are things that sometimes slip out the door during times of stress. So, um, I understand that it's a trying times, and I just ask that everybody understand, and I thank the citizens, uh, from the bottom of my heart for doing this with us. But at the end, it'll all, it'll all be good. Thank you. Agenda item number three. Information from city manager, sales tax allocation, coronavirus, COVID-19 updates, city operation updates, and COVID-19 flow of data.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Michael, as far as the city manager. Um, I wanted to go over first on the sales tax allocation. We did get the April allocation. That is for the month of February. Uh, that came in at four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Uh, our budgeted amount was five hundred and eight, so it wasn't at a shortfall. Uh, the shortfall is, is right about fifty-seven thousand dollars. And from same period, uh, last year, uh, we were at five hundred and two thousand dollars. So from same period last year, it's, it's a fifty-one thousand dollar, uh, difference. So, uh, we have an agenda item later on to, to, to remove, uh, fifty-seven thousand dollars off the budget. And, uh, you know, we know that sales tax is, is continuing to drop, and it's going to hit us, uh, in the next couple of months also. So we're, um, we're preparing for that, and we'll have more recommendations, uh, uh, every month, like we have been for the past two months. Uh, also, wanted to talk about our city operations. Uh, we, we had closed the parks, you know, based on, on the governor's, um, order on the state parks and those things. We had closed the parks, uh, before Easter, closed Lake Finley. Um, we had also, um, and, and we're reopening those today. The parks are reopened. We are still, uh, under governor's order on social distancing and those things. So, uh, we want people to be careful when they're in social gatherings, not more than ten. So that's still in there, but we are opening, uh, the parks and Lake Finley. Uh, utility billing, we had closed, uh, locked the doors to the hall by appointment only. Uh, people could still come in. We, we have a, a ringer out front. But we are, um, going to be opening up, uh, the doors. Uh, but we are going to be, um, four people at a time inside. And, uh, that's going to start Monday, April twenty-seventh. Uh, so we want people to be able to come in if they need to talk to our utility billing department or permit, uh, or code or anything like that. But we are going to be monitoring the, the distance and also, uh, you know, having, uh, uh, the social distancing inside and limiting the number of people at a time. The other thing that, uh, we, uh, we had temporarily halted brush pickup. We wanted the brush pickup crews to be able to be back up in case, uh, people were getting sick on our garbage collection. Uh, but we are, uh, bringing back, we did, um, as of today, bring back the brush pickup routes. Uh, brush gets stacked pretty quickly, and, and I know that we had been getting some calls, but, uh, we are starting that back up. The golf course is, um, still, uh, still closed based on the governor's, uh, order. And we're, we're, we're trying to determine whether we can open it up back on Friday when, when the restrictions loosen up, uh, for other than essential businesses. And so, uh, we're, we're going to make an effort to try to find out and get a clarification from the governor on that, um, here pretty soon. So that's, uh, the update on the city operations. The COVID-19 flow of, of data. One thing I wanted to let, uh, kind of the general public know as, as these things have been happening is, you know, we, we do watch, uh, the Corpus Christi news, and we see the, you know, the city of Corpus Christi, the county of Corpus Christi giving regular updates, uh, on number of people that were testing, on, on things of that sort. And, and we're, uh, worlds different than Corpus Christi in New East County. We, you know, they have their own, uh, public health department, and so they're, it's funded. Um, and, uh, and so they do their own testing. They have their own information. They're able to, uh, to release it. We unfortunately don't have a public health department. Our public health department is Department of State Health Services, Region 11, which is in Harlingen. So smaller counties like us in our area are, are, you know, beholden to, uh, Region 11. And so we're not going to have the updates and the information that somebody like New East County is going to have. So I know people watching, uh, they may be seeing that, and it's like, well, you know, how come we don't know how many people are testing? Uh, and, and we're making an effort to try to gather that information. Patrick's going to talk about that in a second. But, but, uh, we are in a, in a different situation on that. But, um, you know, there, there is the, um, anything that happens like these, uh, positive tests that come in, uh, we were under the impression that it would be the local, uh, whether the mayor, the emergency managing coordinator know, uh, of the municipality. But now they told us from, uh, la, last week that it's the county judge that's going to get the notification. Uh, so I wanted to go ahead and, and hand this off to Patrick to talk about that and also to give, uh, more on the COVID-19 updates.
Good afternoon, uh, Councilman. This is Patrick Thomas, uh, of our team. So, uh, as the city manager stated, uh, the numbers that we're getting, uh, some of those numbers we have to go out and get ourselves, uh, because we don't have our own health department that takes care of it for us. In one second, we're getting there, go. So, uh, what we've done, either locally or internally, is our city staff has reached out to all of the local health providers. Uh, and we tried to get a number of how many, uh, local providers were testing, are doing testing. Not all of them are doing it. Uh, but the ones that are doing it are, are, uh, providing their numbers to us voluntarily. Uh, they don't have to do that. Their, their only requirement is, uh, to report numbers to the state when they, when they get, uh, a, a positive. Uh, there, there, there is some, uh, requirements for them to report within a certain amount of time over to the state health department, uh, which is down in Harlingen. But they voluntarily cooperate with us and help us make decisions locally. We haven't had issues with any of our local, uh, healthcare providers, and they've all been very easy to, uh, working with us. But I can give you some unofficial, now keep in mind, these are unofficial numbers. These are not, uh, uh, numbers of the state going by because, uh, uh, I don't know what the, I don't know anything other than what you would know, uh, about the, the state is, uh, uh, doing. The same website that I'm going to get my numbers for, state, uh, numbers is, uh, the, the same website you can go to, and I'm going to provide that to you, uh, uh, a document, uh, once we get done, uh, with this, I think, the city clerk's going to send something out to you guys. But the local numbers, uh, the state is reporting that they have eighty-nine tests. Um, I don't know how many of theirs were positives or how many of theirs were, uh, uh, are still pending, but they have a total of eighty-nine tests. Locally, with, from our numbers, we have a total of a hundred and fifty-nine tests that were done locally. Uh, and that's to date, uh, as of probably this morning, I think it was the last, uh, time we, we got some of those numbers in. And currently, we have four tests that are still pending locally. Uh, and of course, do you guys know the numbers, uh, uh, are at three? For our county? I, I don't know, they don't give us specifics as to, uh, what, you know, where, where each person lives, uh, uh, or, you know. So the, the numbers are, are three for the county, which we, you know, uh, it's pretty much public information now where some of those people are. But, uh, we're not allowed to give that information out, or we don't know any of that information either. So that's some, one, some of the things that we've done locally, uh, uh, to try to help us make decisions locally. Uh, I will tell you, there, there is going to be here in the next week. It, it most likely won't be this week. It'll be the beginning of next week or sometime next week. Uh, the state is going to step in and provide a, uh, I, I, I don't know what the, the, the technical term for it would be, but basically, they're going to try to get, uh, a, a large amount of testing done in one day, uh, in, in our city or in our county, not just our city, but our county. They're doing this across the state. Uh, it's, it's, uh, an effort to, to try to capture a, uh, big footprint of where, where we're at or where we stand on, on COVID cases. So, uh, we're probably going to see some, some military forces rolling into town. Uh, they're, they're the ones that are going to be the lead on this. They're, they're going to, uh, come in. Uh, uh, right now, we're potentially looking, looking for different places to be able to offer the testing, uh, ad. It'll be a drive-through type testing. The max, uh, amount of, uh, tests that can, that are going to be able to be done in that one day, or it could even be three hundred. Uh, if they feel that they need to come back and do more of those testing sites, uh, then that'll be some, a decision that'll be made on the state level. Uh, we, we didn't, we didn't decide to do this. This is done by the state. Uh, so they'll, they'll come in. As soon as we know the date, we will publicize that. Uh, and as soon as we know the location, we will also publicize that as well. We're working with them to help accommodate them and, and, uh, you know, basically just helping them find, uh, places where they're going to, uh, stay, where they're going to use to, uh, uh, to do the site, and, and that's pretty much it. All the resources, all the, the manpower are being provided, through the state, uh, Department of State Health Services and Texas Military Forces. So be expecting that. Uh, I, I don't want anybody to be, you know, surprised or scared if they start seeing, uh, military vehicles or, or soldiers in uniform, uh, inside. They're all medical staff. They're all, uh, people that specialize in this. So, uh, we'll welcome those numbers and, and, um, I'm hoping that our numbers will stay, um, low. Uh, we're considering, uh, some other, you know, the numbers some of the other counties are getting, we're fairly, uh, uh, doing fairly well. I also have, uh, another report that'll be going out to you guys. Uh, and, and basically, it's basically just cap, uh, capturing all the information that the city manager just gave you, uh, as far as city facilities, uh, and, and things of that such. Uh, so we'll, we'll be sending that out probably on a weekly basis, unless we feel that, you know, there's something that needs to come out a little bit, uh, sooner than that. Uh, we'll, we'll try to, to, to get that out on a weekly basis.
And that's all for our report, uh, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. And thank you both for all your efforts during this, this time. Agenda item number four. Discuss, consider and act upon modifying or revising the City of Alice Disaster Declaration Stay Home Stay Safe. Date amended, revised declaration, order and directive issued March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. Mr. Crisp, your agenda item.
Yes, Mayor. I'm sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Yeah, Mayor, I asked to put this on here because I know that the governor has been issuing some, uh, some, uh, executive orders, uh, here recently, including, you know, the, 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 um, he, the changes that he made on, uh, GA sixteen. And I wanted to try to get us in line, uh, with that while also putting into effect, um, the things that are currently in place, uh, as a single unit and moving us forward to kind of match what we know the governor did and we, and after conversations today with the county, what the county's going to be doing on Friday. So, I know, I know that, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, that's actually perfect timing, and I'm glad you put that on there. Um, I, I had a phone call with the Attorney General's office yesterday and explained the situation because as we all know, on Friday, as for the governor, we'll go to a different order, you know, because there's, we're at, uh, Order Seventeen, I believe. And sixteen did change a lot of these things that we originally had in our original order that was approved by council. Um, so I figured that what we need to do is stay in line with the governor. And because ours is not entirely null and void, but if you go through, um, our, our current order, um, on number, if you go on number one, B, well, that, well, that would go against what the governor's, uh, order is for, on Friday. And then, however, A is in line with the governor. And then, uh, C, D, and E are, are, are all governor's orders that we just implemented and enforced in our area. And then F, also not existent anymore as of tomorrow. So what I figured we could do, when I called the Attorney General, I asked if we could possibly just, just abide by the governor's orders other than our mask order that was, that was put into place yesterday. And, and she said, well, the best thing to do is write your own order and, and, and have it be in line with the governor's order so that it, it represents the same. And if, uh, and I apologize, y'all just thought that, um, a while, a while ago, but Odie's been working on, on it all day. I spoke to her late yesterday afternoon by the time I got the call back. Uh, so what I'm looking at is the new one that y'all, I think y'all have an email. And so if you go to page number five on that one, the last paragraph on that page, uh, this resolution feeds stay-at-home order and Addendum One to City of Alice Disaster Declaration. And we go on, the resolution shall remain in effect in full force until April thirtieth, which is in line with the governor. This is the governor. Unless it is modified, amended, amended or superseded by any new executive orders issued by Governor Abbott. Or, and then C, Attorney General, Representative, recommended that we include, or CDC, Homeland Security, and Department of State Health and Services. Because the governor will issue an order, and then CDC will add their recommendation of how to follow the order. So she said that that would keep it very in line and, and that that way we don't have to keep coming back and writing new orders. And, and then whereby the City of Alice will issue two new executive orders issued by the governor. Um, and if y'all see fit at any time, because we don't know when this will, when this will end. We really have no end date, so to speak. But if during that time, any of us see that there is something that needs to be addressed, that time, we can always come back and, and do an emergency meeting or however we need to, um, to do an amendment. But she did say, I did clarify, John, that there could be an amendment to this order. And, um, or like you had said, just a new order. But at, from this time forward, I think it would be, it would be okay if, if council would attend and amend with, with me to this, to this new order that you guys have received. The only thing that you're going to see in addition to with the governor is, is, uh, putting out there would be on page four, and that's just our mask order that went out last night that we had worked on as of last week.
Mayor, I have some questions or comments I'd like to make on this. Um, first off is, in our order, section A is not covered by the, uh, the governor. The governor has not issued a shelter-in-place or stay-at-home order. So I feel like that does need to be brought back into this, into our, um, order. Uh, council, any, any thoughts on that? I think that everybody's muted, maybe.
What, what page is that? What page is that?
Are you?
So. So from our original order, uh, section one A, uh, all individuals currently living within the city, dot, 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 shelter in their place of residence, dot, dot, dot. The, the governor has no issuance of shelter-in-place or whatever. So if we want to continue that for the citizens of Alice, we need to bring this back in to this, uh, to this resolution.
This is, uh, Councilwoman Sandra Bowen. Um, I agree with you, Pete, on that. I did look at the governor's order and our previous order, and, uh, we should put that back in this order because I don't see it on here.
Some people are going to stay home, stay safer, and that, that, you know, raises a good question right there where, you know, we could, his six, his six feet is, is on there. That's part of the social distancing. Um, so part of it is and part of it isn't. So if, if council feels that that would be something you guys want to put back in there, um, we could entertain that.
Okay. I, I, I think, I, any, uh, any feedback? So we, we had, uh, thoughts from Sandra, uh, Ron or Mr. Robert?
Yes. Councilman Ron Burke, uh, I concur. I agree that it should be, uh, placed in there.
Okay. Molina?
Yeah, this is Robert. I, I agree.
Okay. Next thing, next.
So, okay, do you want to read it in, in its entirety and see, um, the verbiage on there?
I, 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 I can, the, the verbiage, I think we can adopt the original from the original order that we, uh, we acted as resolution. Uh, section one, uh, part A.
Okay.
Uh, all individuals currently living within the City of Alice has ordered, are ordered to shelter in their place of residence for the purposes of this order. Residence includes homes, condominiums, townhomes, apartments, duplexes, hotels, motels, shared rentals, recreational vehicles, motorhomes, and familiar, and similar facilities. To the extent individuals are, are using shared or outdoor spaces, they must all, at all times, be, uh, reasonable and as, as possible maintain social distancing at least six foot from the other person. Uh, they are outside of the residence. Uh, all persons may leave their residence and enter into their jurisdictional limits of the city only for essential activities or to provide and perform essential government functions or to operate essential businesses, all as defined in section two, which section two will now be somewhat different. So we need to mark this section as, uh, applicable, please.
Well, that makes it be different because of the essential business part.
Exactly. Yeah. The governor has that declared also.
That's exactly what I was saying, is that now the governor's new order and the other terms of this order allows you to start doing basically what we were doing originally, occurred, curbside sales. And, um, the prior order, it doesn't anticipate, uh, you being out to do curbside sales or pickups, uh, in that fashion. It just allows, uh, uh, essential business workers and those, uh, purchasing from essential businesses to be out. I mean, I, I, you know, I, I, you, you, you guys need to understand that, uh, you're being more restrictive than pretty much everywhere else except in Michigan.
Mm-hmm. Well, then maybe we should, I mean, a lot of places have the stay-at-home, so maybe we just need to remove that last section that says, all persons may leave their residence, um, for essential activities. But, you know, we, we're, we're not the only ones that have a, a shelter-in-place type order. We just need to remove that part and open it up for the governor's portion of that, which is for the business functions.
Well, and I, I mean, we could, we could try to, if your intent is you want to have people stay at home as much as possible, uh, we can do that. Um, we can change, and I, I know that Odie, I can change the language in the order in that regard, but, uh, you just need to contemplate the fact that the way that that is written, it is not in compliance with the governor's set.
Right.
Well, well, it wasn't in compliance beforehand either, but we still limited.
No, no, the, the point that I'm trying to make is now he has a specific statement that these businesses can operate.
Right. And that's why I'm saying if we need to remove that part for essential activities or businesses, then we.
Removing it just won't be sufficient. We have to come in and we have to rewrite it because prior to this, the governor was less restrictive. Uh, but he didn't have a specific statement. And we can be more restrictive so long as we are not contradictory of what the governor has. In this particular situation, now we're contradictory if we come out and we say that in the fashion that it is. And we'll have to come up with another way to say it. If the intent is to try to keep people to remain at home as much as possible, we can draft something, uh, that comes up with that. But the way that it's written right now, it, it's just, it's not that.
Right. Yeah, because he's actually loosening, loosening up, loosening up as of Friday.
The businesses.
Um, actually, we'll just activity for people to be able to go and do, um, what was labeled as non-essential business. Um, but that's, you know, I mean, he opened parks now, so we open parks. Um, but he still has the same social distancing requirements. Uh, and that's why she recommended that we add the CDC and DSHS because that's covered in their, um, recommendations with the governor's orders. So I, I'm with you, John, um, because this does contradict what, what we've been told.
Okay. So, so essentially, the idea of a stay-at-home order across the state is basically contradictory to every, to what, to what the governor's asking as of now, uh, recommending as of the twenty-fourth, anyway. So.
Yes, sir.
So the recommendation would be to remove the stay-at-home order as of Friday.
Pretty much, right, John?
Yes, so that it's, so that, yeah, and, and what it says is this, it supersedes, the way that it's written, it supersedes and revises what you guys did on the 26th. Um, and, but, and here's, here's the hook with what you guys want to do and what, what the governor did is that you got to understand those businesses that are going to start selling served, curbsides that are essential, they have workers. And those people are going to be out and about working and doing their thing. People are going to start going to those non-essential businesses, start picking up stuff. And so, again, you know, that's, that's where the confrontation is. That's where the problem is if we're going to say you got to stay at home except for essential services or essential businesses.
Which that's not the case anymore. So, yeah, the stay home, stay safe was with the first initial, um, when all of this started. And, and just like, you know, the situation is just so fluid and so, um, non-controllable and literally changes minutely with, with the orders followed. And, and that's why, you know, the advice of the attorney general was just to follow his orders. Unless at one point, you know, we saw something, you know, that we're not addressing, such as the mask thing, that we're still trying to be preventative, um, because we know that the peak hasn't hit us yet. So we don't want to just let go of all of this. Um, we want to implement what we can while staying in line with the governor's orders.
Okay.
Do you have something, Pete, that you would suggest, given that restriction? Do you have something, Pete, that you would suggest would, uh, emphasize, uh, you know, the stay-at-home stuff that you would want to include?
I mean, I did, I mean, when you, when you explain it like that, it does make sense, especially when you talked about the last part. I mean, but it's, 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 it's a hard sell either way, right? Because, you know, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting our own testing facility here. And what worries me is the idea that we're really, we're, we're laxing our judgment and our abilities. And then this testing facility is going to show up. And let's be honest, we're, we're more than likely, we're going to get more cases because we have more testing ability. You know, 300 tests a day, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I think, and it, and that's the total, Patrick, right? That, that they're trying to do is for, I think they're trying to get a 1% sampling, and this is.
Yes, that's correct. It's only going to be a, a one, one-day event.
One day.
Mm-hmm. Oh, it's a one-day.
With a maximum of 300 that they can do in that day.
Okay. And I, and I just.
And I think that, that you're right, though, Councilman Chris, that, that the numbers are, I mean, they're probably going to go up, but it's going to be everywhere as they test more people. Uh, I think, I think percentage-wise, it's just going to increase across the board.
Yeah, that's a trend. And, and if you research other cities, the more you test, the more, that's just the nature of the beast. And, and we need to expect that as, as Patrick explained to us. We are going to see that, but just because people are being tested. Whereas if people aren't tested, we're not going to see the positive results. So that, that is a given, and that's just, um, education that we need to educate the constituents about that not to, not to panic. It's just the nature of the way this works. But they need to test in order to be able to figure out how to, how to attack this. You know, if they don't test them, they don't have enough information. So, yeah.
Good. I, I see your point, Councilman Chris, that
Go ahead.
That, um, I, 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 I see your point that, you know, that you're trying to make on this is that it's, you know, there, there's, the restrictions are getting loosened, and, and, you know, we're doing a little bit of it as far as, you know, letting people go to the parks and things like that and, and opening like Finley, but they're still, you know, it, it's not over, and we're still doing the social distancing. And so how, how do you, it's, if you're looking, I guess, the balance of, you know, we're not out of the woods, but, you know, we're trying to, you know, get back to business, and the governor's trying to get Texas back to business. And so how do you balance that? And so, you know, with, um, where's the, the, between the shelter in place and then to be able to, to not just relax everything? Is that, it seems like what you're looking for? Is that correct?
Yes, exactly.
So this is where we said happy medium is the mask, um, the mask order.
Hello?
Yes?
I'm sorry, this is, uh, this is, uh, Sandra. Um, can't we just, uh, I mean, I understand everything y'all are saying, and, and I agree as well, but, um, can't we just do like a recommendation like the judge did on the, the face mask, uh, recommendation that to stay at home? I mean, it's not an order, but it's a recommendation to come out as needed, you know, um, as you need to.
Yeah, all, all, all.
And, uh, something like that?
Yes.
And just change that last part of it to say all persons may leave their residence as needed, uh, and, and recommend, uh, per recommendation of for business purposes only or something along those lines.
Well, like, if you look at the governor's orders on page two, it does cover that.
I have it right now.
Shortly before GA14, based on President's announcement that the restrictive social distancing guidelines should extend through April 30th.
14, I'm looking for that.
So it's the third to the last, or second to the last full paragraph?
Or it says shortly before executive order DA?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. 08 expired, okay.
So it's extended through April 30th, ask for the governor, the restrictive social, uh, uh, distancing guidelines, which covers that.
Right. It's, covers social distancing, but it doesn't cover staying home. But, I mean.
Yeah, it doesn't think.
Well, if you, if you go on to the second to the last. By limiting social gatherings, because he did, he did discuss social gatherings, um, where it'll, it'll start coming into play too. So we would be, um, not in line. Cause it says, right, by limiting social gatherings and in-person contact with people other than those in the same household. It, it's covered. It's, the wording has to change just because of the goals of the governor and the president to, to get Texas back to work. And that's, that's why we're seeing the, the stay-at-home, uh, not, not in place anymore. Because of the, of, of what he, the goals of, of higher government.
Well. Okay, I, I, you know, I, I can understand that to a point. Um, and, and, um, I could, I'll, I leave it up to, to, to council to make a decision on that one. I could go either way. It's just educating people that they still really need to stay at home, and they need to understand what those social distancing, uh, regulations are.
And you're right, Pete, um, this is going to be a lot of education.
That's my point.
Is just to educate, because as you guys have seen, just because something's recommended, doesn't mean that it's understood or followed. It's, uh, basically going to have to come from us to educate people that, that we really just need to, to get back to work, but safely. We're not encouraging social gathering. We're not encouraging any of that. So that's, that's, it's going to take education. It really is. And that's one of the hardest things about something like this, where we're just going to have to educate.
Right.
So that we're in line with the governor's goals and, and orders.
Okay, my, my next, and I, and I, okay. Now, and I agree, I, I think I can agree with that. I, I think it depends on, um, the rest of the council and how they, because they all voiced opinion also. So I, I can go with that, John. So it just depends on what the rest of the council thinks.
Okay, so, so would you like, as Sandra suggested, basically have the same language, but make it, make it a recommendation?
I'd say yes.
Okay. All right, um, and, uh, and that's in regards to the, uh, stay-at-home issues?
Yes.
All right. Now, and that's, it's okay, so we can do that if that's what council wants. We can put a, uh, recommendation after the, the order language. Um, now, but then additionally, one thing that needs to understand is any order that's been, an executive order that's been put in effect that's still in effect by the governor, it's still in effect in Alice.
Right, completely understand.
Regardless of whether we say it about it in the local order or not. And so I believe the governor's order in regards to no, no gatherings of 10 or more is still there. Uh, and so, you know, if, if, if this order, it doesn't specifically refer to that, but it would still be in effect in the state of Texas.
Right.
Leave the county's order, uh, uh, in, involving those items would still be in effect, which includes the incorporated areas or the cities inside the county as well. So even if there is no specific statement in your order, there are two other levels that could cover these same issues.
And, and, and after speaking to the counties today? And after speaking to the counties today and what they were talking about, they're following, they're looking to New Oasis County as their sample. So they could be bringing back in something too that, that, you know, a little bit stricter, not a recommendation. So we can wait to see what they do on Friday, and we can do it as a recommendation for the time being.
That, that's a, that's a good idea, and that's kind of what we've been doing, waiting for them to do, and then, and then we follow up. And it's, it's not as strict as we feel is, is safer, as safest, um, than we kind of do ours. Because we do, um, the judge supersedes, the governor supersedes all of us, and then the judge supersedes me as a mayor. And so, you know, it's basically up to him on something like that, too.
On how restrictive it is?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm okay with the recommendation. So, um, the next part also is in reference to talking to the county and, and their, 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 and, and what their plans are. And the part about reopening services, we are following what we have in our guidelines, completely follow what, um, the governor put in place as of starting at 12:01 Friday. Um, however, the county has, it supersedes us, and their, theirs is going to carry over until Friday. And if they vote yes, it won't even take effect until 12:00 PM. And I was wondering if we should change ours to 12:00 PM also. And the only reason I suggest that is I don't want to confuse the citizens of Alice who want to show up at their shops at 8:00 in the morning to start doing retail-to-go, but it's legal in the city because we said so. But in all truth, the county still has it as part of their order that doesn't take effect until noon.
Well, in that case, the governor supersedes the judge.
But I thought if something was more restrictive.
As long as it, it's, it can be more restrictive as long as it's not in direct conflict.
So, so his is, his would be more restrictive. The counties would be, the counties would be more restrictive.
But in direct conflict, because the governor has, has it stated clearly on his order.
But does it say that they will go back to work or they can? Because we can't, people can leave their house, houses, but we had them restricted to stay home.
That, that's, that's a, that, I mean, that, that isn't a bad question. Um, you know, is, is, is the governor's order mandatory that you have to let them go back to work? And I would say generally, uh, my knee-jerk reaction would be yes. Uh, that you can't interfere with their ability to go back to work. Uh, that would be my statement, regardless of what the county or what we do.
Okay, I just didn't want to be in any conflict with our county. We understood where the, where the states live, but as restrictive, you know, and being more restrictive is being, would be the county. And I just didn't want to be in conflict with that and cause any problems for our business owners.
And again, even if we are, even if we are, then the county's order would rule. And so if they're going to be more restrictive, and if their restriction isn't, uh, violative of law or in conflict of the governor's order, guess what? It's still in effect inside the city of Alice. And so, so, so it doesn't matter what we put.
Well, it, it does because of what you just said. We're allowing them to open up at midnight, and they're not.
If the judge, if the judge has a direct conflict with, with the decision that comes out of this office, then, then we do have to, where he's superseded. But if there's not a conflict, which he and I have not had any conflicts whatsoever, because he understands that the city of Alice is different than, than the, uh, county outside of Alice. So he's been supportive of, of the take that we want to do.
But it will be in conflict via law. Law is 12:00 AM for us and 12:00 noon for them. And I'm not trying, I'm just trying to get it on a legal line here.
What would you want to change? Tell me.
I, I was saying just the starting time to match what the county does and let, unless you know that the governor's superseded, and it doesn't matter anyway. And if that's true, then we don't need this order.
I'm not okay with that, John, because we would be conflicting with the governor. His, his order is very sta, it's, it's stated clearly.
What portion are we talking about? We talking about March 20th, 20th? Where are we?
We're talking about, no, we're talking about the order that he just did on G, on GA 16 that stated as of 12:00, 12:01 AM on Friday.
Okay.
Okay? That, that specific part of it, right? Retail stores that are not essential services. And here's the part that, that, that makes it where I feel like the county and us can supersede the state because it says may, may be provided through. So it, it's an option, and we're, we're, we're allowed to restrict options, but not restrict commands.
And I, and, and again, I, I, that's, again, I go back to that it's not a bad question. Um, you know, I, I, I understand how, where did, um, I, I would tell you probably the intention is, is to keep localities from restricting those businesses being open.
But the county hasn't even voted on this.
Well, and, 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 you know.
So that's null and, null and, I mean, that's irrelevant right now because what if they read it incorrectly? I, I just don't see them going against the governor's order, honestly.
But where specifically in this order does it say what you, in the order that we prepared, uh, today? Where specifically does it talk about what you're talking about, Pete? Cause I'm looking for it.
It's, 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 it's the main page, let me see what page, yeah, page four. The main spot that says reopening services shall consist of. It's, it's the actual copy of the governor's words on his order.
I'm talking about the order that we gave to you guys. Where does it say that here?
Oh, okay, yours is actually on page, it's also on page, also on page four.
It's the exact same as yours, John.
At the bottom, yeah.
And I just, I just don't see it relevant right now because the county hasn't voted on it or, or taken it.
And if the county hasn't, and here's the problem, if, if you feel it's irrelevant right now because the county hasn't voted on it, then us taking any action is irrelevant because the county hasn't voted on it.
No, because the governor already put the, the order in place, Mr. Chris, to start on Friday. It's the executive order from the governor. So it is relevant for us to stay in line with the governor's orders.
I just, I just feel like we need to figure out exactly, and that's fine. I just want a legal stance on it so that, because if, if, if we're, if we're not, if the county's being more restrictive is the law, I just want to make sure that our people that decide to see our in-town thing aren't breaking law. That's all that comes out to me.
And, and, and here's, here's again the thing, okay? I think we can all agree and understand that anything the county does that's in direct conflict that we do, county supersedes what we've done. So, so the first, so I can see where, if the question is, or the issue is, look, we're going to tell people in the city that they can do, uh, more stuff than people in the county can do. The county's going to come in and prosecute those people. Uh, one, I don't think that's going to occur. But two, the reality is anything that's contradictory that the county does over what we do, that what they're rule. However, I will tell you again, and I know, and I'll say it clearly again, I think that this is, is not a bad question. However, uh, I, I understand the verbiage. Uh, however, I, I believe that the governor's intent is to keep localities from forcing these business, businesses to remain closed.
Okay.
There has been, there has been in, in, I have had many discussions with the Attorney General's Disaster Council since all this started, and that there has, every time we talk, there is some atrocity that a local government is inflicting upon businesses or people in their community that the Attorney General's office is having to weigh into. And so, yes, it is a health and safety concern, and it needs to be taken seriously. Um, however, I, I, I feel that based upon the governor's stance and the press conference and release is that, that the state's attitude is, is that, uh, these, these businesses can remain or should be able to remain open, provided they comply with the governor's order. And so I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the county's order.
That's all I wanted, that's all I needed to hear right there. Perfect.
And even if it is, even if I'm wrong, oh, well.
Okay.
You know, uh, then I doubt they're going to come in and try to prosecute those businesses. And as long as they operate in a safe situation, and I believe that, uh, Councilman Molina was involved in the discussions, uh, more so than I was in regards to the masks. Uh, you know, I think that there's some things in place that will allow those businesses to be open in a safe, safe environment. I mean, that, that, that's it, right?
And I know that the governor's actual recommendations, uh, on the, uh, DSHS.gov, and I, we put a post out there in regards to what his, his guidelines are for these, uh, non-essential, uh, retail-to-go businesses to open up. So there's guidelines there, uh, for safety and slowing the spread also, so. Okay, I mean, and that's all I wanted to hear, that, that you feel like this will, this will not be an issue if our city, if our business is in town, open up at 8:00 in the morning for retail-to-go, even though the county hasn't quite made it yet. That's all I want, that's all I care about. More power to them. That's four more hours that they can get back to work if they open at 8:00. So be it. I'm okay with that. Okay.
Okay.
Um, the next thing was, I mean, if anybody else has something, or I, I continue, it's up to you all.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Chris, and then.
Well, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Sandra.
Well, Pete, I'd, I'd like you to finish, and then we can go on. Ms. Bowen, with all respect, if we can have Mr. Chris finish.
Okay, my next thing is, um, personally, I feel like with the issuance of yesterday's, uh, uh, mask order, uh, that that is already a marital declaration, and that we don't necessarily need that portion in here. And I, I personally feel like we should go ahead and pull it out. And, uh, and then we'd be following the governor's guidelines on our resolution, uh, pretty much to a T. And then we'd have that marital declaration that still would be in effect.
Actually, the Attorney General advised against that, Mr. Chris, that to include it.
I, I don't see that because I know that you can issue resolutions at any given time and, and, uh, and our declarations at any given time. I've been told that over and over again. So I don't quite.
Not legal counsel from the Attorney General's office, and this is what she wants us, the way it should be written. And it makes no difference.
I would really like to see that before I voted into this resolution.
John? Legal?
Well, I don't know what Disaster Council informed the mayor about specifically yesterday. Uh, what I can, what I can tell you is the mayor continues to have the ability to, to implement seven-day orders as we go forward. My statement to the mayor was that the cleanest way, if we issued a seven-day order in regards to the masks, the cleanest way to deal with it was, is then to allow you all to adopt it or extend it as a separate order, uh, to go ahead and include it at, as an amendment to this order. But that was the point that, that, uh, you know, again, my statement is, is that's your all's choice.
Right. And I, I, with the statement that John just made, I think we could leave it as a, as a, as a declaration. Um, I don't, it went out yesterday, and then all of a sudden it's in here today, and it wasn't even part of what I had actually asked for initially. So I feel. So I feel like it should be pulled. A declaration is completely legal, it's legal for seven days, you can issue them at any time. And that this one should amend what we actually had in place to begin with to match the governor's orders, not new orders. And if we have to come back and extend that order, we can meet at that time for that.
So what is your purpose for pulling it? What is your real purpose for pulling it out of this order?
So that this order matches the governor's orders and what we've had in place before in this resolution, not via a declaration as of yesterday.
Uh, Mr. Chris, this is part of the declaration.
This is a new declaration as of yesterday.
This, this, yeah, because that's just the way it is at this time.
That's my recommendation. Any, anybody else in council want to put some input into that?
Well, I'm just curious as to why do we need to put it in here when we already have one that's a separate order that we can approve later on and extend it later on? Why, why does it have to be in here? If that was the case, we should have waited to uh till today's meeting to, to add it on here instead of implementing it yesterday. Um, I'm just curious as to uh what, what's the big issue about taking it out?
I don't have an issue with it coming out. This is Robert Molina, I don't have an issue with it coming out and just remaining the same order that it was when it was declared yesterday. And uh, and then we revisit it uh if necessary. It is a little, a little more restrictive and a little, and, and, you know, we need to see if it works and we are just kind of testing the waters. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Okay, are you finished, Mr. Chris?
Um, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm done. That's fine.
Um, Ms. Bowen, you had something to say?
Yes, I did, thank you. Um, I was curious, I was looking at our agenda, um, agenda packet here and I don't see the addendum one to the disaster declaration that the mayor has put on, uh, put out on April 7th. Um, if it's part of this uh resolution here, which is based on, on page five, um, you know, it says that this resolution supersedes stay-at-home order and addendum one, um, I don't see it attached to our packet. And I was confused in the past and I, I would love to be, uh, to understand this, but is this addendum that was written by the mayor on April 7th? Um, is it void or is, is it, uh, is it a, a may or may not be voided? Or is it a may or may not be in order? I don't understand.
Are you talking about Ms. Bowen? I'm not, I'm not following.
It, it's a simple que- question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Let me.
It's, it's void by operational law at this point. There's no reason to uh, uh, you know, debate it. At, at, at best, it was a seven-day order, the seven days have lapsed and so it's no longer in effect. Just to, just to, uh, ju- just to, just to kind of sweep all the dust out the door. Uh, I believe that uh this, this was included in there to show that it, so you all can have a, have a statement officially that it is no longer in effect. You just don't have to listen to me about what I say, but this'll say, you know, it's no longer in effect. But it's, at this point, it's a nullity. It's, it's, it's not an effect.
So, John, at that point, should it even be included if it was, if it's a nullity? But when now we're recognizing it, should it just be excluded from this order?
And, and, you know, the, 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 this is what, this is what you call statutory language. You can put a whole bunch of extra window dressing in there if you want, or you can take it out. That's completely acceptable. I, I legally, it's not, legally, it's not necessary at this time.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Bowen?
So, um, to resolve this, we just take that out of the verbiage on the resolution we're adopting? That it is a null of the one?
You could, you could, you could, yeah, yes, that's.
Are you taking out?
I, I believe.
On page five on the bottom where it says this, to proceed. It mentions the addendum, which is not in our packet. And now that it's void, why is it in here?
So we can just delete that sentence.
Or just, just, actually just delete and addendum one. Yeah, and addendum one.
Oh, so you're just talking about the verbiage, addendum one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You can delete that. And in the, in the secondary resolution paragraph, it says, be it further resolved that, uh, where is? I, uh, where does it say, Odie, where did we precede it?
The very last page.
First one, now, it's in the first, now, now therefore be resolved by the Alice City Council. The mayor of declaration revised on March 24, 2020 and extended by this council on March 26, 2020 superseded and revised. And so really, whatever you guys want to do.
Okay. Hey, John, I have, I have another quick question. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It says there, it says unless it is modified, that it should remain in effect unless it is modified, amended, rescinded, superv- uh, superseded by any new executive order issued by the, by Governor Albert Abbott, uh, whereby the city of Alice adhere new executive orders issued by Governor Abbott. Does that, by us putting this in, in effect by that statement, does that set, mean that we can no longer change it?
My, my answer, my, my answer would be no. Uh, that uh, this is a simple statement of the law. Uh, any executive order that the governor enters that supersedes the terms of this order, do that regardless of whether you say it in your order or not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that we weren't putting that, putting wording in here that says that, that it's because it says by the office of the governor or by the governor, but doesn't say by any amendments that we do to it.
If you wanted to make that more general or a more general statement of the law, you can say unless it is modified, amended, rescinded, or superseded by a new executive orders issued by Governor Abbott, comma, or other operation of law, comma, whereby the city of Alice will adhere to new executive orders issued by Governor Abbott. Uh, because there are provisions that, and, and both statutory and, 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 uh, uh, administrative that would allow you all to come in and, and extend this, void it, things like that. If you're concerned about that and you, and you want to just say that we can do what the law says, okay, but that's pretty much all that that, that paragraph is saying.
Again, again, I just want to make sure like if, if he extends his order and we decide to extend our order, that we have the ability to do it. We don't have to put it in there if you say it already exists for us to be able to do that. But I just, when I read it this way, I'm like, wait a minute, are we just saying that everything's now on him and that we've taken away our rights for this resolution?
Well, if, if you, and, and with that, I, I can't give you a specifically, a specific uh legal quotation that says yes or no. My statement to you is, is that, or, or authority, I, my statement to you is, is that you all are still entitled to operate within the law, which would allow you to extend, amend, rescind. Um, however, that is, that's not a bad question.
Mask order that's in there. That's where, that's why it's written like that.
No, that doesn't have to do with the mask order.
Yes, Mr. Chris, I have been to this way more than you have, sir. With all due respect, these things are written very different than what you're thinking. And this is just how it is. It's not anybody doing anything, you're just following a, a procedure in, in a time like this where we put in what is going for our city, which is there, but still having the, the governor's orders in place and it's one document.
Here's, here's my suggestion, Mr. Chris, here's my suggestion, is that at the pair, at the, at the comma after issued by Governor Abbott, if you want to say, or by other appropriate uh legal action.
Okay.
You know, if you want to throw that in there or by other approp- or, you know, or by other appropriate governmental or legal action, if you're concerned about getting boxed in, uh, that would take care of it in a general fashion and really not have any effect to the overall order.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so you would like to add that or by other appropriate governmental or legal action?
That would be perfect, thank you.
But it wouldn't matter because the governor supersedes us.
But we can still be more restrictive.
I think you're going backwards, Mr. Chris, to what the governor is anticipating. Okay, any other questions on agenda item number four?
No, that's all I had.
Okay, Mr.?
Oh, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
No, I'm, I'm good with all those changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, I make a motion to uh adopt the uh updated uh resolution um as presented with changes uh to remove the section uh in regards to uh face masks, be it part one, A, B, C, two, and three. Um, in addition, uh, from the next to last paragraph, uh, strike and addendum one and add the aforementioned uh portion to the last sentence in that same paragraph about government and uh, and uh legal action.
And the recommendation for the stay in place?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, I amended to include, I'm in my motion to include uh the section about the shelter in place as recommendation.
It's not really home shelter in place is not the correct li- language, though. John, you know that.
Stay home, stay safe.
Stay home, stay safer is the new verbiage.
Okay, and that, that if I understand correctly, that we're going to prepare a recommendation paragraph to uh put at the end of the order that recommends that uh the community follow the stay, stay home, stay, stay safe guidelines. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Stay home, stay safer. Safer.
Okay.
Okay, um, okay. All in favor, I had a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same.
Aye.
Okay, okay.
Wait a minute, I think.
Or what?
Sandra, I think you need to clear up.
Sorry. Chris, can you please stop talking? Mr. Chris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
And Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, agen- uh, motion stands. Agenda item number five, discuss, consider and act upon approval of city council minutes for March 17, 2020 and special city council minutes for March 26. I'll entertain a motion, should approve minutes?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council minutes uh for March 17, 2020 and special city council minutes for March 26, 2020.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, sign?
Aye.
Okay, oppose, same sign? Motion stands as stated. Agenda item six, here status report on March 2020 month ending financial statements and summary of funds and delivery of March 2020 check registers.
Mayor, I think uh we have Roland, our financial administrator, that's gonna go over the financial statements.
Okay.
Roland, are you still there?
Mr. Ramos, are you there?
He may be muted, um, Roland. I see him on, on, on the panelists, but I don't see the audio.
Roland, if you can hear us, we can't hear you.
If you want, while he's coming back, we can, if you'd like to, I mean, he, the financials are, they're presented uh in here, but he can go over them when he comes back in if you want to move on to another agenda item.
Okay. Agenda item number seven, discuss, consider and act upon authorizing staff to submit applications for COVID-19 funding opportunities and authorize the city manager to sign all applicable grant application documents and grant contracts if funds are awarded.
And uh, Mayor, we have Barbara Reeves, our grant administrator, she should be on too. Barbara, you still there?
Ms. Barbara? Roger, do you?
I don't see Barbara, I saw people here for other, you know, I don't see Barbara, just.
Okay. Mr. Sparza, would you like to?
Yeah. We can continue on, let's uh, let's go to, if you wouldn't mind, go to agenda item number eight and we can go over the uh budget revisions, see if we can get them back on.
Agenda item eight, who's that, Roland?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so we're back to agenda item number six?
Yes, I have to redial, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Okay.
Agenda item six, here status report on March 2020 month ending financial statements and summary of funds and delivery of March 2020 check registers.
Um, financials for the six-month ending March 31st, 2020. We have, uh, we should be about 50%, which is half of the year already through March. Uh, general fund revenues is at $6,64,445, which is about 47 and a half percent. So our general fund revenues are about two and a half percent less than we're targeted 50%. Uh, we'll start with the property tax. Property tax, you, was $1,455,792. And our year-to-date is uh seven, I mean, 2,000, 2,622,722. That's our current uh delinquent uh for MNO. On exhibit B, you'll see uh your MNO and IMS, which uh 2020 is $3,719,535. And 2019 at uh, at the same time was $3,798,886. So a little over $79,000 less than where we were last year at this time. Um, we could go back to exhibit A. On sales tax, we have year-to-date of $3,050,001 on the budget and year-to-date uh through March is $1,821, I'm sorry, year-to-date through January, sales tax is $1,821,615. If you uh, if we can go to exhibit C, please? You can see um, we, this shows budget versus actual through February. Of course, February is not included in these financials, but we did receive it like the city manager mentioned, which was uh $451,416. So our year-to-date budget through February is $2,541,667. That's for five months and our actual is $2,273,031, which is uh $268,636 less uh from budget versus actual. On exhibit D, we have actual from 2020 versus actual 2019. And 2020, we had $2,273,031. And last year at the same time through February was $2,518,609. So that's uh $245,578,000, I mean, $245,578 less than where we were last year at this time. And we can go back to exhibit A, our occupational and mixed beverage. We have uh, that's to do at the end of, of April, which is about 24% right now. And the same thing with franchise license and permits, that's about 33 and a quarter percent. Our intergovernmental was 23%. Charges for services is about 64%. Fines and forfeitures is about 54%. Miscellaneous revenues is about 33% and our inter-fund transfers is about 48%. Um, our general fund expenditures on exhibit E. We're at $5,597,109 year-to-date, which is 44 and a half percent. So that's a good thing, we're about 5.5% less in our expenditure side. Some of our bigger departments, general services at 36%, which is, and we're doing okay there under budget. Finance administration is a little over budget at 54%. Fire department is under budget at 46%. Police department is at 44% and we're under budget there. Street maintenance is about 46%. Garage is right at 50%. Parks and playgrounds at 44%. Library at 47%. And our inner fund is right at 50%. On exhibit F, we have revenues versus expenditures for 2020. And general fund is at $467,335, and revenues over expenditures. Solid waste is in the negative 96,545. We had several repairs that had to be made on some equipment, for several pieces of equipment, and then we have the debt service that had to, that was made also, the payment. So that's the reason solid waste is in the negative right now. Utility funds is doing well at $626,976. Airport is $7,360 in the negative, that's with the transfer. Golf course, $2,800. Hotel occupancy, $67,415. And the multi-use complex is about $84,000 in the negative with the transfer. The last graph is exhibit G. And this has 2019 revenues over expenses versus 2020. Our general fund, last year was $585,727, and this year was a little over $467,000. Solid waste was almost $72,000, and 2019 and 2020 is $96,545. Utility was about $222,000 in 2019. And 2020, we're almost $627,000. Airport was a little over $3,100 in 2019. And 2020, it's about $7,360 in the negative. Golf course was 40, a little over $4,100 in the negative in 19. And 2020 is $1,827. Hotel occupancy tax fund was $37,471 in the negative. And 2020, it's $67,415 in the positive. And the multi-use complex was a little over $105,000. Last year in the negative, and this year it's about $84,000 in negative. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. These are the financials through March 31, 2020.
Ms. Bowen, any questions? Ms. Bowen, any question? Mr. Burke, any questions?
Come here.
Mr. Crisp, any questions?
Yeah, Roland, what's the reasoning behind the solid waste being a negative, almost $100,000, you know, compared to last year's being plus $70,000?
Yeah, we had, we had some big pieces of equipment that needed to be repaired that totaled, you know, well over $100,000. There are compactors, and we did the scale, and we did a few other pieces of equipment that needed to be repaired. So that totaled over $100,000. That's primarily what it is. Then we did have the debt service payment, but the biggest chunk of it is the repairs to those pieces of equipment.
Okay, because that would have just put us at pretty much a zero. And then we would have, we still would have been $80,000 below, but I guess that's more acceptable than being, you know, $180,000 difference. So, okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Molina, any questions?
I just had one quick question. Hello, Roland, how are you?
Good, thank you. All right, I'm sorry.
That wasn't my question, though, but I'm glad to see you're doing okay. On exhibit E, Roland, the finance administration, what did you say was going on there?
Finance administration, we're, we had, we make our software payment, which is Asila. This is, that's a software company we used before. And that by itself was 31, yeah, $31,726.
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Roland.
Thank you, stay safe.
Thank you, likewise.
Yes, sir, thank you. Agenda item number seven, discuss, consider, and act upon authorizing staff to submit applications for COVID-19 funding opportunities, and authorize the city manager to sign all applicable grant application documents and grant contracts if funds are awarded.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Barbara Reeves.
Hi, Ms. Barbara.
Good evening.
Yes, Ms. Barbara, thank you.
So far, three federal agencies have sent out information about funding opportunities due to this event. One of them is FEMA and TEDOM. And that is for personnel costs and activities to prepare for COVID-19. And several staff have been involved in the teleconferences for this funding opportunity, and have sent the departments the appropriate forms to turn in so we can prepare for reimbursement for those eligible activities. Another agency is the U.S. Department of Justice. And the COG, the Coastal Bend Council of Government, will receive an allocation of $721,989 for personnel overtime, PPE, supplies, temporary staff, et cetera. And that's an application that is done through the Office of the Governor's E-Grants Program. So we've sent that information out to the departments as well for them to send us information about any of those costs that they've incurred. That application deadline is June the 15th of this year. And if we get information from the departments that they have eligible activities for reimbursement, we'll prepare the application and we'll bring back a resolution for you to approve. The next agency is the FAA, and it's the CARES Act for airports. This will be administered through the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division. The Alice International Airport has been allocated $20,000. These funds are focused toward enabling airports to retain their employees. We don't have any full-time employees out there, but we can use it for other operating expenses, and we can also use it for capital projects. And I've had a discussion with the head of the grants program at Office of Aviation, and she's hoping that the application process will be streamlined, and they will notify us. And I've been checking their website on a daily basis to see if they have the application posted yet. And as of today, they haven't had it posted yet. They have to follow the guidelines that FAA and Department of Transportation give them. So we'll keep you informed about that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, any questions? Mr. Burke? Ms. Molina? Ms. Molina, any questions? Mr. Crisp, any question?
I'm sorry, no, no question, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crisp, any questions?
None at this time, thank you.
Ms. Bowen, any questions?
Yes, I do have one question, just to clarify something. Ms. Reeves, thank you so much, great job for looking out for us, for the city, on these, these grant applications here. But, so, does the city, are they responsible for any cost or any funds or fees applying for these grants?
The care, the airports, no, as far as the information I have so far. TEDOM, FEMA, it's a 25%, I mean, they'll reimburse us up to 75% of our total cost. So we won't, we won't be reimbursed 100% through FEMA and TEDOM. The U.S. Department of Justice, I believe, is 100%.
Great. Okay, thank you so much.
There's no match. There's no match on the Department of Justice.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Thank you.
May I make a motion? Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to authorize staff to submit applications for COVID-19 funding opportunities, and authorize the city manager to sign all applicable grant application documents and grant contracts if funds are awarded.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Agenda item number eight, discuss, consider, and act upon an ordinance amending budget revisions for the City of Alice fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget amendment. Mr. Asparza?
Yes, ma'am. Also, in reference to the sales tax drop that we had talked about in agenda item number three, we're, like we did last month, we're gonna remove another $57,000, the shortfall from the budget. And so what we, what we found, and this is general fund money, so we have taken some overtime out from the deputy city clerk position. That's an unfilled position. And that position actually did have quite a bit of overtime. And we took a little bit out last time, even though it's unfilled, we had budgeted some more. We're gonna take some more out because we're thinking of reworking some of the things that that position was doing. And that was, that was Becky who passed away early this year. And, you know, that position handled, Alice Water Authority handled permits, public works administration, and also all the duties of a deputy city clerk. And so we'll be changing that around, but we're removing all the overtime from that. We're also removing the overtime from the garage and the streets and engineering. And if there needs to be anything, we'll, gonna substitute flex time for overtime. So if somebody does need to stay over, have to be called in, they'll be able to take that appropriate time off after they do that. So that totals about $14,000. We also had about $1,500, well, let me be exact here on what we're gonna do. That totals $14,000,029.00. The salary reserves, which are the retention checks that we do, we had a little money in there that we're gonna remove. That was $1,456. In the streets department, we also had $25,000 that we had budgeted for equipment hire and rentals. That was for some of the brush things that we were doing. And we were also trying to get grants for it, which I think hopefully we will be able to find some. Clearing some of the drainage that we've been doing, something extra than what we do regularly. So we're moving that, and that totals $25,000. And the last thing that we have on here is street repair, maintenance, and supplies. That's typically about a $90,000 budgeted item, and we spent about 40 already. And so we usually have some leftover, some of the street materials and maintenance materials. And so we felt comfortable taking another 17 out of there, which totals the budget amendment that we're asking for, $57,485. And that gets us through on this time, but we know that next month is, it'll be, it's, you know, we're anticipating another drop. And so we're gonna anticipate that, and we're talking to the directors on budget. We're preparing for budget for next year. So we had a meeting with our directors today and asked them to find, you know, at least 10% from their budgets to see what we can cut. And we're gonna have to continue doing this. And, you know, we may have to be looking at staffing levels also. So those are the things that, as our sales tax continues to drop, that we're gonna have to do every month like we've been doing. And so right now, I'm asking for you guys to approve a $57,495 budget amendment to remove these items from the budget that I spoke about.
Okay. Ms. Bowen, any questions?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Burke, any questions?
No ma'am.
Mr. Molina, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Crisp, any questions?
None at this time, ma'am, thank you.
Michael, the second one you discussed, $4,000, what? What was that second item? That's the 14, 14, 029?
14,000, there was a $1,400. It was salary reserve, the retention checks, the December salary reserves. And there was some money that was still there, it was 1,400. $56.
Okay. And then you've got already a plan going into, and when you say the future, are you thinking next month? Because this is, this is very important for us.
Yeah, well, I'm expecting to have directors give me, May the first is when, they've got some budget information, they've got to get back to finance. And at that time, I'm expecting them to have some recommendations on further cuts to be able to mitigate the downfall we're having. And so, you know, they're gonna be, yeah, bigger numbers.
Yeah, okay, because as we all know, unfortunately, our town is still oil and gas dependent. And this hits us first, and then months after, it's still going on. And this one's the worst of the worst that's been seen by anybody. So, Council, this is one that we should all take into account and maybe come up with ideas, or we can cut, because this is a bigger problem than the current problem that we think is the bigger problem. We've got a lot of big problems, but this is a huge one. Okay, Mr. Asparza, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving an ordinance amending budget revisions for the City of Alice fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget amendment.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Sandra, can you clarify for the record, aye or nay?
Aye.
Okay. You just have a little lag, ma'am.
I think you got, there's a little delay.
Motion stands as stated. Thank you, Mr. Asparza. And good luck with the future, number 12.
Right.
Agenda item number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon repealing and replacing ordinance number 2007 with ordinance number 2126 of the City of Alice to appoint and or reappoint directors to the Board of Directors of Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two, the TERZ Number Two San Diego Creek Estates Development Program, City of Alice.
Mayor, Mr. Enrique Guzman asked us to put this on the agenda to make some changes to the board of directors for this TERZ Number Two. And it's, we're recommending to move forward with it. Now, there's, there's, there's no changes from us. We're still waiting for a development agreement, if we're ever gonna get one in place. And we've been talking to Mr. Guzman, you know, for a long time, and he's met with you as well, of course. And all this is, is updating the board of directors. Doesn't do anything else, doesn't commit us to anything else, just an update on it. So we were fine moving that on and presenting this to you guys. And he is changing two of the board members, and then naming a commissioner and also the mayor by name on the board members as well.
Yes, sir. Okay. Council, any questions? Ms. Molina?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Crisp?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Bowen?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I was muted, sorry. Uh, mayor, I make a motion to repeal and replace ordinance number two zero the, zero seven with ordinance number two zero two six of the City of Alice to appoint and/or reappoint directors of the Board of Directors of Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two, uh, San Diego Creek Estates Development Program, City of Alice.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign? Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number ten, discuss, consider and act upon a resolution authorizing tax refund on an offer to purchase tax sale property described as Century Estates Unit Number One, Lot Six, in addition to the City of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas.
Uh, this is, uh, simply an exemption, uh, that, that was, um, uh, was an eighty percent, it went to a hundred percent exemption for an individual, uh, so this is the money that is owed back, uh, to them on taxes, and it was brought to us by the, uh, Jimwells County Appraisal District, and of course, they've gotta go to, uh, all the other entities as well, uh, and, and get this refund, so, of course, we're recommending, uh, approval.
Okay, council, any questions?
And just for clarity's sake, Mike, is, is that actually stated correctly a, as an agenda item? It says, uh, authorizing a tax refund of an offer to purchase tax sale property?
That, that, that part, yeah, and, and that part was, um, uh, was carried over from the, from the last agenda item, but it's, it, it, there, there'd be a period on there, we checked with, uh, with legal to make sure that that'd be fine, but it is a refund, so, uh, if you put a period after refund, that, that's in essence what it's doing.
Okay.
Um, and John, you, you were okay with that, right?
Yes, it, it, it clearly states it's for a, a tax refund, and, and just because there was a misnomer or failure to, uh, insert a period or important to leave another word, then we're fine.
Okay, beautiful, that's all I wanna know, thank you. That's it, thank you, mayor.
Questions, council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, adopt a resolution authorizing tax refund, um, for a tax property, uh, Century Estates Unit One, Lot Six, in addition to City of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Opposed, same sign? Motion stands as stated. Thank you. Agenda item eleven, discuss, consider and act upon a resolution authorizing tax refund on an offer to purchase tax sale property described as Bordeaux Number Eight, S D Lot One Bordeaux five six seven eight, includes B P P account number A A T L zero zero P zero two zero 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 eight point zero three five, in addition to the City of Alice, Jimwells County.
Uh, so, this one is, is similar, it's also a refund, uh, it was worded, uh, the same way, so it should be a period after a refund, and, uh, this property wa, is a, um, depart, an apartment complex, and the values, um, changed because the valuation method was changed, uh, and it went to, of course, the appraisal district, and they, they, uh, uh, they approved it, and I guess they val, them, they valued it that way also. So, as you know, there's three ways to value property, income approach, market approach, and cost approach, and here, they changed the property to be an income approach, and that changed the valuation of it, so this is also a refund that is owed back to, uh, the property owner.
Okay. Council, any questions?
No questions.
No.
No.
I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing tax refund on tax property described as Bordeaux's Number Eight, S D Lot One Bordeaux's, uh, eight, no, I'm sorry, yeah, eight, including, uh, B P P account number A A T L zero zero P zero two zero zero eight point zero three five, in addition to the City of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Mr. Burke, did you vote aye?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, motion stands as stated. Agenda item twelve, discuss, consider and act upon authorizing staff to issue a request for proposals for grant writing and administrative services regarding funding available through the Texas Community Development Block Grant, twenty twenty fire ambulance service truck fast fund select as at least one council member to serve on the evaluation committee to review proposals.
Mayor and council, this is Barbara Reeves. Um, this is one funding category in the Texas C D B G program, and eligible projects include fire trucks, ambulances, uh, vehicle extrication tools, S C B As, and, and other items. The range of awards is from fifty thousand up to five hundred thousand, there's a required match of five thousand dollars, and in Texas, to administer or implement C D B G, the entity has to be certified by the Texas Department of Agriculture, that's why we're asking, um, for you to take this first step, to allow us to use the, um, T D A streamlined step-by-step process to, um, procure a firm or individual to provide grant writing and grant administrative services, even if we as the city staff self-administered C D B G, we have to be certified as well. The cost of preparing, um, a C D B G application is ineligible for reimbursement under C D B G, so if the firm or individual who selected charges to prepare the grant application, that cost would be, would have to be borne by the city. Uh, another, another, um, part of the C D B G program is that your project has to, the beneficiaries of your project have to be, fifty-one percent of the beneficiaries have to be of low to moderate income. In this case, we've been working with the primary service area map that our fire department, uh, has, and, um, engineering overlay the census tract map over the, the service area map, and we looked at the block group statistics and followed the T D A or the T D A, uh, formula to calculate L M I. Yesterday, I sent that information into the state so, for their review to see if the calculation is accurate, and if there's, uh, something we need to revise or another option. Um, if you don't meet the fifty-one percent L M I in your project area, you have an option of doing a door-to-door survey, which I'm not certain is practical with the, uh, amount of territory our fire department covers in its primary service area, but we're waiting to hear back from the state. The calculation that was sent into the state yesterday did not reach the fifty-one percent L M I, so just wanted to point that out as another special consideration on this project. So tonight, we're just asking, uh, for your authorization to move forward with that step-by-step procurement process to select a firm or individual to write or help write the application, and to administer the project should we be awarded funding, and to also select at least one council member to serve on the selection committee in reviewing those proposals from the firms and individuals.
Ms. Bowen, any questions?
Ms. Reeves, um, what type of firm are we talking about that should help, uh, write this?
They're, they're pre-qualified on the T D A website, and we printed out the firms that have indicated that they, uh, provide services either statewide and/or to the coastal Bend cog area, and, um, there are different types of firms, um, and I can, uh, show you and anyone else who's interested, um, the list, and you can see what types of firms they are. Some are planning groups, you know, planning firms, and others are grant-writing firms. Um, there may be some engineering firms included in that pre-qualified list.
Okay, well, I was just, uh, curious, because, uh, I would like to be on the, the committee here, but I don't know if it's a conflict of interest, because I work for an engineering firm, so I just don't want any conflict.
Yeah, I'm not sure your firm's listed on that pre-qualified list, but I could check.
But it is, you're, you're applying for engineering firms or for, or grant-writing firms?
Grant writing and grant administration.
Yeah, so I don't think that that would be too much of a conflict, because...
Mr. Lemon, can you answer that, since you are, are legal?
I'm sorry, yes.
John?
You, you guys are breaking up, um, repeat the question, please.
Sandra?
Repeat the question, please.
Uh, John, I was just curious, uh, they, they need a, uh, council member to be on the committee here, and I'm willing to do this, but I'm just concerned as, because my, I work for an engineering firm, a civil engineering firm, if that's a conflict of interest.
Well, if they're gonna submit, if they're gonna be involved in the process at all, then yes, it, it would be. So is that civil engineering firm gonna be putting bids in and whatnot, and so...
I don't think there's any civil in this, uh, this, uh, deal, is there, uh, Barbara?
No, this, no, this is just, no, 'cause this would be the, if we received funding, it would be to purchase the fire truck or another vehicle, or S C B As, so there'd be no engineering involved.
So then, then the answer is in reality, no, in theory, possibly, but in reality, it doesn't seem like there would be.
And, and if the pre-qualified list...
Sorry, Sandra?
Uh, John, I said, what is your advice toward me? Should I just step down and not offer my assistance on this and let somebody else do it?
I, and, and Sandra, that's completely up to you, uh, I don't see where you're gonna have a conflict, uh, because what Barbara is saying and what the, what the agenda item looks like is it's, it's not for anything that would involve any sort of input or involvement from the firm you work for. And if it does, if it does...
That's great, I just find it very...
Okay.
I just find it very interesting, I'd love to, to get involved in it.
Um, okay, any other questions, Mr. Burke?
Yes, what, what you're saying is that the cap on the maximum are, uh, that we would be responsible for on these projects, or are there any...
Councilman, there's a match of five thousand dollars, the grant awards range from a minimum of fifty thousand up to a maximum award of five hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And how about the fees for the, uh, grant preparers?
Um, the grant preparers, well...
Is that reimbursable, is that, uh...
The grant, the applica, preparing a grant application's not reimbursable, uh, but the administrative cost to hire, whatever a firm or individual would charge for administering or implementing the project, it, their fee cannot exceed the lesser of the following, thirty-five thousand dollars or sixteen percent of the total grant award. So there is a cap on the administrative fees that a firm can charge.
And that's non-reimbursable?
No, the, the administrative fees are reimbursable, the grant writing, the preparing of the application's not reimbursable.
And, and what does that cost?
Uh, I, I, I don't know, 'cause I've only seen a couple where the firms haven't charged to prepare the application, so I, I'm not aware of what they might charge. We would ask them, you know, in prepare, in sending out the R F P, we would list grant writing as one of the, um, items, and see what they, see if they, uh, what they propose.
Okay.
All right, Burke.
Burke, did she answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Molina, any questions?
I have no questions, mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chris, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you, they already asked him.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion...
Mayor, I'll make a motion?
Go right ahead, Mr. Molina, go right ahead. Mayor, I make a motion authorizing... Robert, you go ahead.
Mayor, I make a motion authorizing staff to issue a request, uh, R F P for grant writing and administrative services regarding funding available through the Texas Community Development Block Grant, twenty twenty fire ambulance service truck fund. I'd also like to recommend Councilwoman Sandra Bowman to serve as the evaluation committee, on the evaluation committee to review the proposals.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item thirteen, discuss, consider and act upon adopting a resolution to designate authorized signatories for the twenty nineteen Texas Community Development Block Grant Contract seven two one eight four eight nine, and I think, John, you had a correction to the number, correct?
Yes, mayor, and I, the, the contract number is incorrect, it was what was provided to us, and, uh, it's a misnomer, and, um, the correct, uh, contract number is attached to the, uh, attached to the packet, uh, in the proposal itself. Let me see. Can't get the stupid thing to pull up. But...
It's seven two one nine four eight nine.
All right, and, uh, that's the, that's the appropriate contract number. On four. And I believe the next agenda item, it's the same issue.
Okay.
And number fifteen as well.
Fifteen doesn't have a contract, though.
Right.
Okay.
Mayor and council, these, the last three, thirteen through fifteen, uh, have to do with the C D B G grant award of three hundred thousand dollars to the city, uh, for wastewater improvement, which includes one street, um, in the county. This originally, this application originally went in as a multi-jurisdictional application with the county as the lead, uh, and the city as a partner, the state, uh, made the decision to make it a single jurisdiction award and awarded, uh, the, the state contract to the city, but we're still partnering with the county of the street where we will be doing, uh, special projects, we'll be doing the wastewater improvement, our San Felipe, Trevino, and Gloria Streets. Um, this first, uh, agenda item number thirteen is, uh, one of the requirements of the C D B G program, and it's to designate the authorized signatories for this contract. and it's to designate the authorized signatories for this contract.
So, so who would we, who would be authorized, 'cause it just says authorized signatories?
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be Michael, and then it'll be, uh, Roland and Vanessa, who would be authorized to submit for reimbursement.
So...
Any questions, counsel, Ms. Bowen?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
No, thank you, I'm fine.
I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, I make a motion to act upon, uh, adopting a resolution designating Michael Esparza, uh, Roland Ramos, and Vanessa Torres as signatories for the two thousand nineteen Texas Community Development Block Grant Contract Number seven two one nine eight, uh, nine four eight nine. Again, that's seven two one nine four eight nine.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? No opposed, motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Okay. And agenda number fifteen?
Fourteen.
Discuss, discuss, consider, fourteen or fifteen?
Fourteen.
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 I'm fourteen.
Okay, sorry, agenda item fourteen, discuss, consider and act upon adopting a resolution regarding civil rights provisions required under the Community Development Block Grant C D B G Contract, uh, written as seven two one eight four eight nine, corrected number seven two one nine four eight nine, authorizing city manager to sign and implement the policies.
Mayor and counsel, these are other requirements for, uh, us to comply with in order to implement, um, this wastewater project, and these have to do with, um, access it for spare housing, um, civil rights, the resolution has to do with civil rights, and these are typical, uh, policies, uh, that go with the C D B G project.
Counsel, any questions?
No questions.
No.
No, ma'am.